Aloha, kaka. Welcome and good evening. My name is James Yusdis and I'm the president of the Wyman Community Association. Thank you to those joining us online tonight for our regular monthly Wyman Community Association Town Meeting. I encourage you to follow, like, and subscribe to the Wyman Community Association on Facebook, Instagram, and YouTube. You may also find relevant information and resources on our website at wymentown.org. We strive to keep our accounts active and up to date. At this point, I would like to recognize the WCA Board members. Our Vice President, Michael Donnelly, our Treasurer, Jeremy Madrid, Secretary Nancy Carr Smith, and our Directors, Riley Smith, Lonnie Olson-Chang, David Greenwell, and Patty Cook. On behalf of the Wyman Community Association Board, we are grateful for support shown by you, the community, to hold virtual town meetings during this time. And thank you all for your interest in joining us for those past meetings and for viewing and sharing those recordings. You're welcome to revisit and watch these videos at your leisure on our Facebook page or up on our YouTube channel. The Wyman Community Association is a nonprofit organization that strives to promote open participation by all of the Wyman community, develop leadership, and support the smart growth of the region. If you'd like to support the work that we have done and help continue our effort in connecting with our community, you are more than welcome to donate and join as a member. If this is something that interests you and you'd like to receive more information, please email us at wymentown.com or visit our website at wymentown.org. And on our website, you can find an option to contribute and join digitally. You're welcome to mail us a membership form, which you can also find on our website. Your contributions membership allow us to reach out and connect with the community in this setting and support the work that the WCA has done over the past 60 years. Mahalo Nui. Also, as mentioned and per our agenda, tonight we'll be hearing some important updates that address community growth, concerns, and planning for our future. We'll begin this evening spotlighting our June nonprofit Nakalai Va'aa. And next, we will then hear from our district's police department as they provide a community police report. Then we'll have an opportunity here from our two county councilors and our state House representative. And as we move into the main portion of tonight's agenda, we will learn about and discuss the future of renewable energy and project plans in the South Pola District and across Wa'ee County. This evening, we are grateful to present you with a full and informative agenda. And after we hear from these officials and representatives, we have allocated some time to share your questions with our presenters. We appreciate community members sending their questions. We will also try to capture some of your live questions for this portion. So please use the Facebook chat feature to pose your questions and we'll do our best to share them with our representatives here and our guests. So thank you to the WCA Board members. We have Michael Donnelly and Patty Cook joining me this evening and presenting these questions. And so for the month of June, the Wyman Community Association will be spotlighting Nakalai Va'aa as our nonprofit of the month. And I would like to welcome a couple of special guests for this evening's meeting. Hokulea Captain Pohmai Bertleman and Hokulea Navigator Kayulani Murphy. Both Pohmai and Kayulani are the next generation of leaders for Hawaii's voyaging Ohana and brought the Hokulea home on its final leg from Tahiti to Hawaii for its 37-month, 41,000-mile round the world Malama Hona voyage. We are grateful to be joined by Pohmai and Kayulani this evening to share the values that guide Nakalai Va'aa's voyaging missions and learn more about the programs set to train the next generation of voyagers. Welcome, Pohmai and Kayulani. Thank you for joining us.
Aloha, hi, kaka. Mahalo Nui. Thank you for having us, James, and to the Wyman Community Association Board. Thank you all as well for having us. Mahalo. I think for both you and I, we are just really grateful to be a part of these organizations, Nakalai Va'aa, Polynesian Voyaging Society, and more especially the Ohana Va'aa, which is a consortium of all of the canoes throughout Hawaii and the Pacific. And if you guys can't believe it, Hawaii has eight voyaging canoes, deep-sea voyaging canoes, and many, many, many small double-haul sailing canoes. But throughout the Pacific, we currently have 27 voyaging canoes now. And if you think about that, from Hokulea being birthed, going through the process of being birthed in 1974, and then stating her first voyage in 1976 till now, it's been some years since we've actually been able to build up that fleet, if you will, of canoes. And so for the two of us and for so many others, you know, we really are just products of all the individuals that come before us that we step on the deck with. Pretty similar to the community that is represented here tonight. So it takes many, many hands. It takes many, many experiences. And it takes all types of people to come together to make the crews that we saw on the ocean with. And so mahalo Nui to everybody for having us. As we were talking, I think Nakalai Va'aa is definitely to be celebrated because she's here in Wyman. Because she was birthed here and where the Quanset Hut used to be, the Parker Ranch Quanset Hut. That's where Makali'i was born. And I definitely know that Councilman Tim Richards and then also Representative Tarnis spent a lot of time helping us to secure that space along with the Ohana Parker Ranch. And so mahalo Nui to all of you for helping us to do that well. But Makali'i wouldn't be here if it wasn't for the canoes and the representation of other canoes and eventually this Ohana Va'aa that we are part of. And so I guess in the seven or eight minutes that we have left to share, I think one of the things that we wanted to just get across was one of the experiences that really helps to keep us grounded in the work that we both do. And so for me, I'm a teacher at Kanoka in a charter school. And Kayu will share a little bit about where and what she does as well. But the work that the two of us are in is very much reminiscent of what we do on the canoe as far as completing tasks and providing opportunity for others to be able to learn not just about the ocean, but how the ocean is interconnected and the canoes are interconnected with Ina and with Kanoka and with people. So I think that's where we'll start. And so I'm actually going to ask Kayu if she can just share with us a little bit, say aloha to everybody and then share with us a little bit about what she does and how that informs what we do within the community. Aloha, Tita.
Aloha, Tita. Aloha, my kaka. Mahalo for having us. It's always an honor to be at any kind of Wyman community stuffs because I feel like I've, you know, I grew up in Wyman. Born and raised here, but I went away for high school. And while I was away for high school, Makali'i was being built. So it's kind of funny that while I was away and then in college I got involved with Hokulea. And that's pretty much how I got to come back to getting close with my Tita here, Pohmai, by being on a voyage. The first voyage that I was on was with her. And then I worked for the Polynesian Voyaging Society for a number of years and got to experience going to all the islands really with Hokulea and sail alongside Makali'i a number of times and then get to know Nakalai Va'aa as, you know, my extended family. But it's kind of funny that I had to go to Oahu to get closer that way. But anyway, so I come home. It's still Wyman. It's still home for me. And in my experience with PBS, I really got to learn about the amazing things that Uncle Clay started with education programs with the kids here on Hawaii Island and the amazing reach that the education programs have for Nakalai Va'aa. So I've always kind of felt like that's the model that I would always aspire to. I currently teach at Honolulu Community College, so I still live on Oahu. And prior to COVID, I would be home every single month. This is the third time this past year, though, that I've been home. And so it's kind of funny to get to join you folks from Wyman, actually, from my Ohana place. But yeah, I don't want to talk more about myself, but just to let you folks know that I've always, like I said, just really admired the education work and community work that Nakalai Va'aa does. And as Pohmai mentioned, part of being part of our Hawaii Va'aa especially, but definitely throughout the Pacific, and it's all about, you know, kind of following Papa Ma's guidance of staying together and supporting each other and any voyage that anybody does is really trying to uplift everybody. So I'm going to toss it back to you, Pohmai, because I don't want to talk too much.
Mahalo, Kayu. And I think again, for us, you know, Nakalai Va'aa, for us in regards to Makali'i specifically, like you, James, I think the kulana of being alakai or pualakai of the organization is always, one of those tasks that are a little bit daunting, and you always try to figure out with the team that you work with, how to, especially in this last year, how to still have inspirational programming and keep everybody safe. And so this summer, and I know Kayu is actually starting a program as well, come up in the next week or so. But, you know, one of the greatest assets for us has been this, the internet. And through the internet, we've actually been able to do a lot of recordings and virtual programming and all of those things. And to the point where a lot of our reach in the last seven months, eight months, maybe nine to 12 months as well, has been a lot further because of the internet than it was prior to that. And so we've been able to meet with schools all over the world in the mainland. And a lot of our schools here in Hawaii are not just on Hawaii Moko anymore. And so that's really been a huge plus for us. Of course, you miss the interaction. And of course, there's, you know, you long for the times when you have that ability. And I think now as we continue to do all of our part to move towards keeping ourselves safe, as we've established our own norm, our new norm, the norm, the norm we have to get out of anyway. And so here we are now. Then we've started to refine what those kinds of work looks like, what the work looks like. So I know that we also have a program coming up in the next two weeks. It'll go on for four weeks with students from Wyman. And so, you know, just really working to stay in time with the season on the earth and make the best adjustments and make the best adjustments. The adjustments is necessary for us, very similar to what we do on the canoe. So outside of that, unless anybody has anything for us or wants, has anything specific you want to ask, we do realize that time is precious. And just really wanted to say mahalo Nui to all of you for always supporting the canoes wherever and in whatever capacity they're able to be a part of the community in. Thank you for always looking out for us and more especially, thank you for being such large pillars of the community. Sometimes it seems like it goes unnoticed, but it really doesn't. So mahalo.
Patty, did you have a question?
Yes, I was wondering, Pohmai, if you would tell us, how does the community support you? What can we do to help?
You know, I think one of the ways, more especially right now, I'm not sure if everybody's aware, but Nakalai Va'aa is actually in a movement right now with the Hawaiian Islands Land Trust to Malama Mahukona, to bring Mahukona out of resort into conservation, to create a stewardship plan for that space. And Representative Tarnis and definitely Tim Richards, Councilman Tim Richards, is and has been helping us along, helping us through that process. So one would be to support the movement that's happening down at Mahukona and to really help us collectively to recognize how important these places are in relationship to the Ohana that were born there, to the spirit of the Ina and to the future of that space. And so that's definitely one of those ways, Auntie. Another way to do that for any of our organizations is to always check our websites. Nakalai Va'aa is pretty easy, nakalaiva'a.org, hokula.com. And all of these places, we always have events posted and different, you know, we can always direct people to the stores that we have there and staying current on the gear and being able to wear them and have them out in the community is also always a great talking piece. And so, yeah, I would say check out our website, but more especially right now. Hawaiian Islands Land Trust, I'll go ahead and put some of the information in the chat as we go forward through the evening. But it is, it's such a great opportunity for us thus far. And I think for the canoes, it really helps us to recognize, you know, when we talk about, heva'aa, hemoku, hemoku, heva'aa, the canoe is the island and the island is the canoe, or think canoe, think island, think island, think canoe. It really motivates us as people of the Va'aa to recognize that without the Ina, a canoe can't, won't be built and it can't go anywhere. Without the community who enable us to become these Va'aa, the canoe can't go anywhere. And so I'm just really grateful that we have the opportunity to join with the Kohala families, Hawaiian Islands Land Trust, again, our community officials, to make that happen for Hawaii. So, yeah, mahalo.
Mahalo, Pohmai. Anything else you'd like to add, Kayu? Anything last few words here?
No, again, just mahalo. And yeah, I always, I really heard mostly support what Pohmai has to share. Mahalo, everyone.
Mahalo. And we did, for our viewers out there, we did place, one of our board members has placed nakalaiva'a.org in the chat there. So you can link to that quickly from the video. And it's that, that's up there. So thank you for doing that, Nancy. And mahalo Nui, Kayu and Pohmai. Thank you so much for your time and all the work that you do in our community here to support our next generation of voyagers and for reaching further and pushing us beyond. So thank you so much. Mahalo. All right, wonderful. It's great to hear from them for that generation and our leaders there on our Va'aa. So thank you. At this time, I would like to welcome our newly appointed Wyman Police Captain, Captain Evangelista, and welcome back our community police officer, Justin Kabantin, to share with us a few updates. Congratulations, Captain Evangelista, on having just been recently appointed as our South Pola Police District Captain. Mahalo officers. Thanks for joining us.
Thanks. Thanks for having us.
Absolutely. The floor is yours.
How you doing, everybody? Thank you again. So I just wanted to again introduce our new captain, Captain Evangelista. He started June. And then after that, I wanted to thank everybody for helping me spread the word about the Coffee with a Cup, our two events that we had. James, thank you for trying to get everybody to attend and helping spread the word. One was at Wyman Coffee Company at Parker Square. That was a good turnout. We talked to many adults and a couple of kids there. We got to pass out stickers and pencils. And then we had another one at Starbucks the following Thursday. That was a lot more people at Starbucks, obviously more popular there. I don't have any tea. I don't have a Coffee with a Cup scheduled for June, but I'm shooting for July again. So I'm going to have, I'll put that out there for July. We're going to, we're going to do it again at Parker Square and at Starbucks. And I'll send out a flyer when that's ready and finalized. Another thing I wanted to bring up was the, I don't know if everybody's seen the Sign Wave Event for Police Week. They were at Church Row on May 11th. I think it was a Tuesday. Over a dozen people turned out for that. And they actually made the front page of West Hawaii the next day. I'm not sure if you guys caught a copy of that paper. But that lady that organized that pretty much took that and ran with it. And she found all the support she needed for that event. So just wanted to, and I'll put that out in the next South Pola Community Newsletter that I'm working on. As far as traffic for the month of May, traffic was again really, the enforcement was really good with the South Pola Police Officers. I think they issued about 892 total citations for the whole month of May. And they were able to get 10 DUIRS. So people are still out there, you know, drinking and driving. Fortunately, we have our officers out there patrolling the roads and trying to keep their roads as safe as they can. Speeding was up within 174 citations. They had moving citations was up again, 149 citations was issued for moving citations. There's about 40 seatbelt citations, 81 unsafe citations, and 51 cellphone citations for the month of May. So people are still talking on their phones, you know. So our officers are out there doing the best they can, watching the roadways to keep it safe. Unfortunately, we had a lot more major accidents on our roadways compared to last month. I think it was a total of 13 major traffic collisions that was reported. So if you can't help, spread the word, you know. Let everybody know, don't talk in text while they're driving, you know, buckle up and stuff like that. As far as the traffic, traffic crime trends go for South Pola District, we only had one assault, we had about three burglaries, five criminal property damage cases, zero robberies, we had about 11 thefts, five UCPVs and one UEMV for the District of South Pola. We did have about 17 drug cases though for South Pola. A lot of drug cases were initiated by our officers conducting traffic stops and enforcing the laws on the road. So a lot of the drug cases came from the initial traffic stop and they made observations in the vehicle and so forth. As far as the South Pola Newsletter, I will put my email in the chat box for everyone. And if you guys want to subscribe to our newsletter, whoever's not receiving it, just shoot me an email and I'll add you to our list. I'm working on it this week. It should be ready for the captain's review by tomorrow. And then I'm hoping to get it out by early next week. Thank you for your guys' time. Again, stay tuned for the next Coffee with a Cup and I'll get that out to you. Thanks, James.
Thank you, officer. Any last words you'd like to say, Captain?
Yeah, I just want to say that, you know, I've been here a couple of days in this position, but I've worked in Wyman before. And I've lived in Wyman for quite a while, so I am familiar with the district. I'm familiar with some of the faces I see on the screen in front of me. Hopefully, I'm familiar to some of the people that are watching. As things pick back up with our summer season, our visitor season, South Pola District has a lot of visitor traffic with the resorts. We're going to see an increase in traffic levels and crime levels. We're going to do our best to stay on top of that and to monitor trends to try and combat any spikes in crime. And it really takes the community helping us out by reporting things and communicating with us. And on a lighter note, we love it when people smile at us. So if you feel so, feel encouraged to do so, please give us a smile. We will do our best to return the gesture. Mahalo, everybody.
Thank you, Captain. And once again, congratulations. Thank you, Officer Kabantin. Appreciate your time. I want to appreciate all of your officers and your team here in Wyman in the South Pola District. We appreciate the work you do to support our communities. Mahalo. All right. So next up, we'll be hearing from our county council members, from our two Wyman councilors, actually. So first, I'd like to welcome Councillor Tim Richards to share with us some news and happenings at the council. Welcome, councillor.
Hello, everyone, and thanks, James. Appreciate the invitation once again to Wyman Community Association. First of all, Pohmai never apologized to me. I've known you and your family way too long. And I tell you, just sitting here on the listening, Pohmai has such a gentle, leading, commanding voice. I tell you, I was just enjoying listening to the talk stories. You were going through everything, Pohmai. So well done. Now, to what she was talking about, the Mahukona, coming before council is the authorization that will go before committee on June 15th, authorizing the county to go into negotiations for Mahukona and that punk funding. And I went down there, I met with Shorty Bertleman, Chad Paishan, Hilt was down there, and Patty Ann Solomon. We talked story. And this is a really good thing and good direction going forward. So if I can invite people to offer their support for the punk purchase of that area for Mahukona. Anyway, enough on that one. Updates for the council. We just finished budget today. In fact, I see Heather Kimball smiling. We finally got through that at noon today. This year's budget, or excuse me, next year's budget, which takes in effect July 1. The June budget we have is about $609 million. Today, we finished up with about $610 million. We, by ordinance, must have a balanced budget, and we do. So going forward, there was some extra funding that was rearranged a little bit to add more to our first responders, some safety equipment for fire, community policing for the police. So that was all approved today in our committee, or excuse me, in our council, and that goes before the mayor for his signature. On the capital investment side, capital improvement, that budget's about $220 million right now. And we authorized another about $10 million today. So that budget's standing about $230 million. Please understand, this is the priority list for the county. It is not the funded list, meaning we still have to look for funding. And again, a lot of it is the wishes of the community going forward and what the priorities from the communities we all have been receiving. I always mention Councilwoman Kimball's bridges in her district. She has a lot of bridges. And I use that kind of as our poster child. We have a lot of things we need to catch up with our maintenance and repair. So that's something we'll be looking at going forward. I will touch on again, we did approve a funding request for Mahukona for the pavilion over there. And again, we have to work on getting that funded. That was a $5 million ask. So we are done with budget for this year and we can move on to getting some of the other things for the county done. I was last week at a WIR meeting, which is the Western Interstate Region of the National Association of Counties, and that was up in Montana. And a lot of conversation is around what hopefully is going to come out of Washington, DC as far as the funding for this infrastructure rebuilding. Twofold, it will add jobs, it'll increase our economy, and probably most importantly for all of us, it'll also take care of a lot of the infrastructure needs that we need. We're working on that very diligently. And one of the things as we go forward, again, with this capital improvement budget, et cetera, is to get things on list. So we're not quite shovel-ready, but what we are is putting them on a party list. So if funding does become available, we can move reasonably quickly and get those things taken care of. That's one thing Hawaii's been very successful, Hawaii State and also some in the county, is that we have things lined up, ready to go. So when we find the funding, we can put our hand up real quick and get that funding into our communities and get people to work and get the infrastructure we need. So with that, James isn't waving too frantically at me yet, so I think we still have a few minutes. Oh, he just gave me the one-minute sign. So with that, that kind of catches things up from around the county right now. And I'm going to turn this over to Councilwoman Heather Kimball, and she can weigh in on a few things. So again, thank you so much for the invitation. I stayed in my parameters. So Patty Cook is smiling at me. And Captain Evangelista, congratulations. And here's the smile for you. Go ahead, take it away, Heather.
Thank you, Tim. And again, thank you, James, and the Board of the Wyman Community Association for hosting this monthly event. And I think it's just fabulous that you give this opportunity for the community to get updates on what's going on and ask questions. Really appreciate this forum. As Tim mentioned, we just made it through. I feel like I've survived, I don't know, an arduous journey. As a new council member, this was really the most daunting task. And we did well. I want to say that today, the discussions were really collaborative. And I was happy to support my colleague, Mr. Richards, on his two CIP projects for your area, the bathrooms up in Havi, which we all will look forward to. Um, which we all will look forward to and then Mahu Kona, of course. Uh, as far as the bridges, um, I did get a CIP pass that would, uh, bring a temporary bridge in to, to. Deal with a, a bridge that is currently closed in Hamakua. But the nice thing about this is the temporary bridge itself is an investment. And once that the main bridge gets repaired there, it's something that we can move around and put in other places. So very pleased to have my colleague's support. For that investment. Um, one of the, the other things that got funded in our discussions today, and I know this is going to be important to a lot of people. Is some additional DMV positions, both for Hilo and the Kona DMV. I see Patty Cook smiling and nodding. If there's a call or a, a email that I get really regularly. It's about some issue with the Department of Motor Vehicles. And we know that most people, really their only interaction with the county is going to go. Through the DMV. And so we want to make sure that that's a positive experience. So very excited to have two more positions funded. We also put in some more money, make sure that we're successful with the rollout of Intergov, which is the online permitting system. That impacts both the planning department and DPW that is still scheduled on target to happen on July twenty sixth. So they're working really hard to make sure it's going to work well. And we gave them a little extra funding to make sure that. That's all successful. On Tuesday, uh, we spoke as a. I'm sorry, Wednesday. See, I'm mixing my day. That's the kind of week it's been. What day is it? I don't even know. Um, on Wednesday, we talked a little bit about the American Rescue Package Funds. Um, our county is going to get two tranches of about nineteen and a half million dollars. And, um, there are some pretty strict guidelines about these funds can be used. Um, but we did pass the resolution that allows us to accept those funds with some input from the, um. Finance Director about where some of the, that funding might go. Of course, we're going to have to continue to fund prevention. And mitigation measures related to COVID nineteen. Um, we can also put some funding towards economic development. So we're looking at potentially some grants for farmers, grants for small businesses. And, and I'm really excited to, to hear that the, um, R and D Director Doug Adams is really taking an equity lens. Um, in terms of distributing those economic development funds. We are able to, to use those funds to replace some lost revenue. And so we're still waiting to hear Representative Tarnus. About what's going to happen with some of the state money, whether or not they're going to fund, um, the lifeguards here or not. That's something that we will actually. Potentially fund out of the American Rescue Package if, if the state doesn't, um, provide that funding. Um, we're also going to throw a little bit of money towards, uh, Department of Water Supply, uh, for water exploration, water and sewer. Um, infrastructure are really the only infrastructure, things that we can fund through the American Rescue Package. So it's still an ongoing dialogue where these ultimately will go, but that's some of the general. Areas that, that we're planning to, to put that funding towards. Um, I did want to mention, there is still. Uh, emergency rental assistance funds available. So if you're in a position where you need some funds for, uh, rental assistance. Go to Hawaii County ERAP.org. And everything you need to know is there along with the application process. Couple of other things I've been getting calls about recently as far as rubbish. Uh, did want to clarify the latest rules from the Department of Environmental Management. If you have a commercial sticker. On your vehicle, you are allowed to, um. Throw away two to three gallon bags, as long as you're not in a dump truck. Um, or with a trailer, that's still prohibited. But if you have that commercial sticker, you still are allowed to, um. Just dispose of your rubbish at the transfer stations. That's rule, um, nineteen point eight. If anybody wants the details for DEM. And then the other thing is, um. Uh, stray cats and dogs. We are getting several calls about that. And I just wanted to make quick mention that, um, councilmember Richards and I. Will be working on this and sitting down with the mayor and, and talking about this issue. We, we know it's a concern for a lot of folks. So with that, I'll, I'll close and thank you again for the opportunity to, to share with everybody.
Mahalo councillors, councillor Kimball, councillor Richards, thank you for your time and for your hard work and dedication to our budget. Thank you for spending all your time and energy on that recently. So thank you for supporting our communities. I really appreciate all that you do. Um, and next up, I would like to welcome back, uh, Representative David Tarnus. Uh, let's see, uh, with us to kind of recap the twenty twenty one, uh, state legislative session. And presenting the updates. So thank you, Representative Tarnus, for joining us. Thank you for joining us this evening. Welcome.
Mahalo, James, and thanks for this opportunity to be able to share a brief update. Uh, I'm going to share my screen here. Um, and it's, uh, usually a, a, a presentation that it takes, uh, much longer than the ten minutes that I have. But, um, what I'm going to do is just, uh, be able to, um. You know, just share with you some of what we, we've, uh, accomplished there at the, at the legislature. This is, uh, a, uh, it's been a very busy session, very difficult session because we had to deal with a significant, uh, budget. Um, shortfall in, uh, what we were, uh, hoping to get. We had about a two billion dollar shortfall in what we were expecting to get. Because of the economic crisis that we've experienced because of COVID. We were able to balance the budget, uh, because of federal funding. Uh, and you can see here some of the summary, because of significant support from the federal government. We were able to fill in many of the pukas in our budget, uh, and we still had to make some strategic cuts. But we were able to keep a support for some of the necessary safety net services, uh, that you see listed here. And we were able to get some support for capital improvement projects as well. Everyone is on, uh, internet right now, as Paul Mai said. So we were, we, it was very clear we needed to expand our broadband infrastructure. So we were able to pass a bill to do that. We, we have to deal with our, uh, climate change issues. And reduce our carbon emissions. And so we passed some important bills to support, uh, converting our state fleet. Over to zero emissions vehicle, supporting EV infrastructure through, uh, some support from the state. You know, we had so many people on unemployment. We had the highest unemployment rate in the entire country. And, uh, in, in order to make sure that the employers didn't have to see a significant increase in their, uh, unemployment insurance premiums. We put a significant amount of money of federal funds to, uh, reimburse our, uh, unemployment insurance trust fund. So that the employers did not have to see a significant increase in their unemployment insurance premium. So that was very important. We made some significant, uh, changes in our tourist, uh, HTA, uh, budget. We reduced the budget some, took it off of a special fund, put it into general funds. So now there's much more transparency. Uh, and, um, and we did actually change the allocation. Of, uh, where our tourism research is being done. We moved that over to DBED. And I know the counties aren't happy about this, but this is something that's a long time coming. We removed the county's TAT allocation. And instead allow the counties to levy their own transient accommodations tax. So that'll be a conversation that we'll be having for some time. This year, I chaired the Water and Land Committee. And so in doing that, one of the key things I wanted to do was to integrate sustainability. Into our land use planning. And so we made some significant changes. You, this, you can review this when you look at the video later and you can look at all the details here. But we made some significant changes, uh, in our government structure. Combining the Land Use Commission and the Office of Environmental Quality Control into the Office of Planning and renamed it the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development. We allowed all boards and commissions in the state to be able to conduct their meetings remotely. Not just during an emergency proclamation, but now they can do it moving forward, even when we're out of this emergency. We made some significant changes in our land lease policy because I'm really trying to support the state to be a better manager of our public land trust. Um, there's been some controversy about this, but I still believe this is an important step. To ensure that the state does a good job managing its public land trust. We dealt with sea level rise in a significant way. We addressed all of the different, uh, we requested all of the different agencies to come back to us. With what are the infrastructure that is going to be impacted by sea level rise? And how do we address that? And how are we going to prioritize it? All real estate agents has to, have to disclose now any parcel they're trying to sell, if it's in the sea level rise exposure area. So anyone who's looking to buy land would know that this is something that could potentially be affected by sea level rise, coastal flooding in the future. We made some significant improvements in our land management planning, established some working groups. Uh, and we made, uh, some significant land use approvals, one of which was finally, after many years, approving a transfer. Uh, um, a land exchange between the state and Parker Ranch, uh, which was very important. Uh, we'd made some significant, uh, steps to improve our, uh, management of marine resources. Um, I won't go through all the details here, but, uh, uh, helping to, uh, regulate lay nets better, protecting sharks. Um, we actually is, uh, allowed now that when you go out on a commercial marine fishing vessel. You just need one fishing license for the entire vessel. So everyone on the vessel doesn't have to have their own. So that was really important. Thanks, James. But I wanted to highlight that, uh, you know, Quai High North Small Boat Harbor had significant damage. We were able to appropriate some, but not all the funds needed. To help fix that. And we were also able to appropriate funds to improve a Quai High Commercial Harbor. Agricultural land management, another important thing we were able to move forward. Uh, and I want to highlight one thing that affects Waimea quite a bit is that now you can actually, farmers who want to, uh, build larger greenhouses. Can do that without getting a building permit. All of these greenhouses are properly permitted because they're packaged. Productions, um, but this will allow much larger greenhouses to be built without building permits. We made some significant improvements to our farm to school program. Um, and I want to highlight, we were able to put, uh. Um, three quarters of a million dollars into the Kamala Vacuum Cooling Plant for post harvest, uh, um, processing. And put about half a million dollars into the Waimea irrigation, uh, system improvements. We did quite a bit for state parks and forestry management. Uh, I want to highlight, we were able to appropriate, uh, actually it. Two plus million dollars for Hopuna Beach State Park Water System Repair and improving in the road that's there. About a million dollars is going to go into water system repair and a little over a million for other improvements at Hopuna. So hopefully we're going to be able to fix that water system so it doesn't keep breaking. Uh, and three quarters of a million dollars will go into the tree nursery, which is in Waimea. So that'll be very important. Uh, eight hundred seventy five thousand for combating rapid Ohea death. Uh, and we're able to move forward also on some efforts to, to do some landscape scale mosquito control. Because we're losing our native birds to mosquitoes, uh, to avian malaria. So we're, we're actually doing some improvements on that. I won't go through the details on this one, but we made some significant, uh, uh, steps forward on affordable housing, transit oriented development. Um, education, uh, we put in seven point four million to District Seven, our district complex area, school level programs. And for all the teachers, we were able to provide a one-time bonus because they have done an incredible job and they really need support. Uh, we've made some significant improvements in our, uh, workforce development, uh, program. And I want to highlight some of our capital improvement project investments. Kohala High School, two and a half million to begin work on a new gym. And a major one, kind of, we're able to get one point, uh, one point eight million to finish their multipurpose building, including a certified. Commercial kitchen. So they can start building or start producing meals for their own kids and for others in the community. Um, a little less than a half million for Kohala Middle School, an alarm system there, um, which will be really important moving forward. Uh, Quai High Road, Waaka Stream Bridge, we put an additional eight million into that project and that we should see started soon. Uh, I know I've been saying that for a while, but we should be seeing that started soon. And then, uh, from last session, we, we had put twenty two million in for the Waimea Regional Safety Improvement Project. That, uh, EA is moving forward and you can see, uh, where you can see access to that. I want to wrap up now just by saying that the State House of Representatives is so proud of the Waimea Community Association. And especially our fearless leader, James Houston. You know, it's only been eighteen months since James took over, uh, as the president. And he has been just. Uh, really a, a, uh, a wonderful captain to this, uh, and, uh, we've all been pulling. But I, it was wonderful to see that in March of this year, on Freedom of Information Day, the Big Island Press Club announced that James Houston. And the Waimea Community Association are, uh, honored as the twenty twenty recipients. Uh, of the Torch of Light Award, which is awarded annually to honor an individual entity for brightening the public's right to know. And because what James and the Waimea Community States Association have had a great success in facilitating effective. And accessible communication and discussion of important issues facing Waimea and our wider Hawaii island community. So on behalf of the House of Representatives, congratulations to James and the Waimea Community Association on your excellent work. We're all blessed to have you part of our community. If you need more information, here's my contact information. Please get ahold of me, sign up for my newsletter and I'll be able to provide more, uh, things. Uh, information to you on a ready basis, um, uh, through my newsletter. I'll stop sharing there and I'll turn it back to you, Captain James Houston. Mahalo.
Well, thank you, Representative Tarnus. That's, uh, very generous and very kind of you, um, on behalf of the State House to share that. Um, and award us with that, that certificate there. So thank you so much for your, your faith in us here in the community and supporting the community. And, um, we take your lead from yourself, Representative Tarnus, and the council members here as well. So thank you so much for your leadership and, um, we're all in this together. So thank you very much. Aloha. Wow. Mahalo, Representative Tarnus. Um, very touching there. Thank you. Um, at this point, I'd like to move into a couple of community announcements, if you don't mind. So first off, I'd like to wish you all a happy Pride Month, first of all. So happy Pride Month, everyone. Thank you. And, uh, next, as we enter our summer months, I, I, we do encourage you, uh, to take some time to prepare for our summer hurricanes. And our summer season here. So make sure you check your emergency kits and make any necessary fixes to your home that you may need to do. Also, and I will share this up on the screen here. Uh, tomorrow, and this is actually for, for, for the whole of the, the island rather, but the whole month of June. Um, we have, uh, some food basket, uh, food drops, Ohana food drops, uh, that are scheduled. So tomorrow, you can see here, I'll zoom in a little bit. Uh, tomorrow, we'll be at the Colony Shooty, uh, District Park here in Waimea at ten AM. So that's tomorrow. And the other ones are across the island as well, uh, for the rest of the state. So this is their lineup for emergency food distribution schedule for the month of June. Um, remember to wear your masks when you, when you attend. Uh, grateful for that. Let's see, next up, we have a couple of other things. Uh, a couple of things I'll share with you here as well. So you can see some images and some contact information there. Um, one thing to keep in mind, I know there are a couple of, of programs out there for, uh, emergency rental assistance programs. And this one is specifically through OHA. Uh, so for our native Hawaiian community that are experiencing financial hardship for rent utility, mortgage payments. And rent deposits, uh, you can apply for, um, a rental assistance. Uh, OHA is accepting applications and their websites are, uh, let's see if I can give you that right one there, just so that you have it on hand. Uh, you can visit oha.org slash emergency aid, or you can even go to kava, kavilele.org. And you can apply for these, uh, app, you can make an application, uh, there and apply to that, to those means there. Um, next up, we have, I don't think I have an image for this one, but it's rather an update from, uh, Queens North White Community Hospital. Um, they're continuing to offer COVID nineteen vaccinations in their clinic. Uh, no appointments are necessary at this time, uh, during the weekdays from four to six PM. Um, so these vaccinations are available without appointment on weekdays for those age twelve and older. Uh, but those under age of eighteen must be accompanied by a parent or legal guardian. Uh, this clinic is on the, the south side of the hospital campus here in Waimea. Remember to wear your masks, uh, practice physical, good physical distancing when you attend. Bring your photo ID, insurance card if you have it. Uh, wear something comfortable that they can, they can access and give you a shot without a problem. Um, please don't bring any animals or children that are not receiving the vaccine at that time. And be prepared to receive your second, uh, dose three weeks after that. Um, if you would like a, like, uh, an appointment or you have any questions, you can always email the hospital at QNHCHvaccine. At queens.org. Uh, you need to include your name, your birth date and a phone number so they can call you back on to make that appointment or any questions in it answer. Or you can even call them at eight eight one four six six eight. So some information about that. Next up, this Saturday, so I'll share the screen again. Uh, this Saturday is, uh, National Trails Day. And we have here in Waimea our own Waimea, Waimea Stream Trail. And, uh, the volunteers with Waimea Trails and Greenways are putting on a little event. Uh, in, you know, as part of National Trails Day. So you, if you want to learn and, and attend, uh, learn about the trail and you can, you can visit one of the tents that either set up at the Parker School Farmers Market or even one that'll be on the trail. So this is to really learn about Kialakaha Waimea, so our little stream trail behind the nature park that runs through more or less the center of our town here. But if you'd like to learn a little bit more about this project or sign up to help their effort, I would do so on the Saturday, Saturday morning at the market there or along the trail. The other, the other, uh, one I had here is Kaukau for Keke. And our Waimea School Cafeteria is closed for the summer due to renovations. So if you are in need of, um, you know, food for your children in, in the community here, you need to sign up as soon as possible for this summer food distribution effort. This is really done through the, through the help, uh, and work of Vibrant Hawaii and the Waimea Resilience Hub, the Annunciation Food Pantry, Kukua Christian Ministries, New Hope Waikoloa Food Pantry and Kalapu Community Association. So there's some information about that and an email that you can reach out to for any more information and how to sign up. So I'd encourage you to do so during this difficult time for a lot of our families. All right. Uh, I think I have just a couple of quick ones more here. You know, and always you keep on lookout on our, uh, for any upcoming shows at the theater or astronomy talks, uh, hosted by Keck Observatory. These announcements and the ones previously mentioned and more can be found on our Facebook page. So there's a lot of information up there, um, you know, going beyond this. And, you know, lastly, the Waimea Community Association wants to thank you, you know, our viewers and our fellow community members for continuing to do your part preventing the spread of COVID-19, you know, by wearing your masks, practicing good physical distancing, avoiding those large gatherings and helping to maintain this low rate of infection across our, our state and our communities. Please also be aware of any continued COVID scams, especially as they relate to the vaccine. And please continue to do your part, uh, for the health and safety of our community and our loved ones. And as before, and as always, this is our coolly honor and we hope that you will be considered getting vaccinated at some point. Mahalo Nui. And if you are a part of a community group or you would like assistance in reaching out to the wider Waimea community, you know, please do not hesitate to email us. Uh, we'd be happy to help broadcast your event on our social media platforms or here during one of our town meetings. All right. Well, that does it for, um, some of the announcements there from the community. I know there are many others that need to be connected with and shared with the community. But I do appreciate your time and letting me share a couple of those there. So as we kind of move into the main portion of tonight's agenda, we felt it timely and appropriate to welcome back, uh, a couple of our recurring guests to share with us the future of energy here in South Kohala and across Waikiki Island. Uh, these two particular projects, these thirty megawatt solar with battery storage projects will help Waikiki Island and the state transition from fossil fuel energy to a clean and less costly alternatives. So to start things off, I would like to welcome the AES Waikoloa Solar Plus Storage Team. And tonight we are grateful to be joined again by Nicholas Molinari, the Hawaii Development Project Manager, Kirsten Poonu, the Hawaii Community Engagement and Strategic Partners, Partnership, and as well as Shane Peters, uh, President of Peters Communication. Uh, so thank you guys for joining us and I will pass it off to you, Shane, Nick and Kirsten for this portion.
Mahalo, James. Thank you. And thank you to the members of the Waimea Community Association. We're just looking back at the calendar and it's been about a year actually since we've, uh, been back in front of you guys. And I think we've got a lot of information to share with you. And so with, I know there's a lot of information going out, uh, tonight. So without further ado, I think we'll just roll right into it if you don't mind. I'm going to turn things over to Kirsten, uh, Poonu, our Community Engagement Manager for AES in Hawaii. Kirsten?
Aloha Shane. Thank you, everyone. Uh, and I reiterate, thank you again, James, for putting together such a, such an informative and, and packed schedule. It's, it's been really helpful for me to listen to, to the presentations tonight. So we'll, we'll try to get through this part quite quickly. As Shane mentioned, my name is Kirsten Poonu. I'm a Community Engagement Manager for AES's Solar and Storage Projects here in Hawaii. This is just a quick snapshot of some of the other projects that we have under development across the state. So the project right here to speak to you tonight about is the Waikoloa Solar Plus Storage Project. That's, um, to our ends, you located just off Waikoloa Road, um, in between Waikoloa Village and, and Mamalaho Highway. So the project is a thirty megawatt solar photonic system combined with a hundred twenty megawatt hours of battery energy storage. It connects to the Hawaiian Electric Company grid, which means that it serves all of Hawaii islands. It utilizes approximately two hundred and eighty-five acres of, of land. And it's, it's, it's a temporary in nature, um, project. The power purchase agreement is for a period of twenty-five years and, uh, which requires commercial operation by the end of twenty twenty-two. And at the end of the project's, um, you know, useful life, the project will be decommissioned by AES and the area will be returned to its existing condition or comparable. So I'll have Nick, um, go over a couple of the technical details here. Nick?
Yeah, thanks Kirsten. Um, I guess first off, uh, James and members of the Waimea Community Association, congratulations on your, uh, your achievement tonight. And, um, thanks for having us back. We're grateful for the opportunity to be here. Um, so I, I just wanted to point out, um, a couple of the key components I, of the project. I know it's a little difficult to see on the screen. I'll, I'll show a couple of photographs, um, on one of the next slides, but most of what you're seeing, um, on the screen, uh, are the, the solar panels themselves. And then you can't really see it here, but dispersed amongst the solar panels are the, uh, individual battery containers. And then the project, uh, has a new substation in a new Hawaiian Electric switchyard, right in the middle of the site there, where it, uh, connects to, uh, the Hawaiian Electric Grid. So I think these photographs, um, will help illustrate, um, and, and these are the same photos we showed at our, um, presentation in, I guess, May of last year. So this is from our, one of our projects on the Y, uh, or on the island of Kauai. You can see the solar panels up at the top. These are the, you know, standard solar panels, just like you see on homes. What's unique about these is the, the tracker system, um, which allows the panels to follow the sun, uh, throughout the day, which increases the amount of energy that can be, uh, absorbed and produced. And then, um, on the bottom of the screen, you can see battery containers. So that's really what makes the project unique. You know, traditional utility scale solar, um, you know, when the sun's out, the power is going to the grid, whether it's, it's needed or not. You know, with these types of projects with the storage element, you know, we can, you know, we can store the power and then it can be, dispatched at, at night or at periods when, um, when it's actually needed. So the batteries sit inside these, uh, containers. The containers from the outside just look like, uh, you know, just like a standard shipping container, but, it's fully integrated with a system of controls, uh, HVAC for temperature control of the batteries, as well as a built-in fire suppression system. Go to the next slide, please.
Thanks, Nick. So, um, you know, as mentioned, these projects help to contribute to, um, the hundred percent renewable energy goals of both the, the state as well as the county and the island. Additionally, there are economic benefits associated with the development, um, and the construction of the project. This particular project, um, is anticipated to create approximately two hundred full-time equivalent, um, jobs, local jobs, direct, indirect and induced, um, as well as, uh, result in an approximately forty-seven million dollars, um, worth of economic output as a result. Mentioning environmental benefits, again, the project, um, is anticipated to supply nearly seven point seven, over seven percent of the island's total energy needs, as well as power for the equivalent of approximately thirteen thousand six hundred Hawaii homes. The low cost, uh, for this power, uh, that would be delivered to Hawaiian Electric Company, um, at a fixed price of eight cents a kilowatt hour. This is, uh, one of the lowest prices in the state, state for, um, solar combined with battery storage. This price is stable over twenty-five years, uh, the term of the, of the, of the project and the contract. And this stable pricing, um, is anticipated to hedge against fossil fuels, um, the volatility of those prices, uh, as well as anticipated to assist with, um, bringing residential rates down over time. Additionally, this project will contribute to the avoidance of nearly, um, five hundred thousand barrels of oil. Okay, um, we wanted to give you an idea of what you might expect, uh, to see once the project is up and running. I'll, I'll go through these quite quickly. Uh, it's very common practice to take these viewpoints from publicly available, uh, points. You can see the key in this, in this upper right-hand corner here. So this is the existing condition taken from Waikoloa, um, Village, um, Paniwa Road and, and Mamanava, uh, excuse me. This is, um, showing that the project, um, is basically because of topography and existing vegetation, not visible from, from this particular angle. This is taken, uh, further Ma'aka, uh, Waikoloa Road, looking Ma'aka toward Mamanava Highway. And, um, this is what you might expect to see, um, you know, when the panels are, are kind of tilted, uh, toward, uh, towards the south. This is off Waikoloa Road, uh, traveling up Ma'aka, um, looking Makai. Again, this is, uh, the simulated condition there. Little further up Waikoloa Road, you can see Puhu Hinaki in the distance there and, and this is what the solar panels might look like from that angle. And then from Mamanava Highway, a little further up, it's, it's quite difficult to see. I'll switch back and forth right here where my cursor is, is kind of, um, where the panels might be. I'll turn it over to Nick now and have him, um, talk a little bit about our timeline and next up.
So, um, over the last couple of years, we've, uh, largely been in, um, you know, design, uh, due diligence, studies, consultation, trying to incorporate feedback into the development of the project. I think when we were last here, we were, you know, working with the county on a number of, uh, permits and approvals. You know, I'm happy to say we, you know, we have received a number of those approvals. You know, despite the, the COVID pandemic. So, um, I'll talk in a little bit more detail on one of the next slides about where we are as far as the, the construction process goes, but, you know, we are underway with, um, some site construction and construction's expected to last through, uh, the remainder of this year, uh, into next year. We do have a commercial operations date, um, uh, guaranteed for, uh, November twenty twenty-two. Obviously we want to, you know, be up and running as soon as possible, but you know, that's what we're, we're targeting. And then, um, you know, as Kirsten, Kirsten mentioned, the project will run for twenty-five years and at the end of that period, would be decommissioned and, and, uh, the land would be restored to its existing condition. So, you know, I mentioned construction. Um, we were able to, uh, start work, um, in April of this year. So I wanted to provide just kind of an anticipated construction timeline. Now these dates or these months can kind of move by a month or two, you know, depending on, you know, receipt of the remaining approvals and, um, you know, shipping, uh, deliveries. But just to give you a high-level overview, so, you know, right now we're really engrading site preparation activities, getting the site ready for, um, vertical construction. And then, um, we'll move later in the summer into, um, installation of fencing, uh, the, the actual, uh, solar panel and, uh, tracking system, the batteries, uh, as well as the substation. By spring of next year, April twenty-two, uh, or so, you know, we'll start to see some landscaping go up along Waikoloa Highway, uh, Waikoloa Road. Um, and then we'll also, um, you know, once construction is starting to wind down, we'll ramp up, um, you know, the, this testing, commissioning, programming and getting the site, uh, ready for, um, energization and, um, commercial operations by November of, of twenty twenty-two. So, um, you know, like I mentioned, construction has, um, has begun. And I, I wanted to provide a, a brief overview of kind of some of the activities that have taken place or are currently taking place, um, or will be upcoming over the next, um, you know, thirty, thirty days or so. So we started receiving, uh, equipment, um, mostly construction equipment such as dozers, uh, forklifts, grados, um, storage containers, um, those sorts of things, as well as some of the, the materials for the, the system itself. You can see on the photograph there, the steel I-beams, which, you know, ultimately is the, the foundation for the, um, for the tracking system. So that material started to, to arrive to the site. It's being staged, um, on-site. The actual site preparation work, um, you know, has been really limited to selective grading, um, and compacting. So really focused on the internal roadways, um, you know, so there's a network of internal roadways that'll, you know, facilitate access around, you know, the, the solar arrays. So we started cutting those in, um, getting those leveled and, and, you know, ready to be, built out. Um, there's no mass grading required. The system's designed so that, um, you know, it, it can, we largely avoided areas of steep slopes. Um, and so we, we kind of tried to concentrate things to, you know, areas where, where mass grading or, you know, grading could be minimized. And, you know, a number of mitigation techniques such as, uh, um, you know, UXO survey, erosion controls, water trucks running, dust monitors being installed, especially along Waikoloa, uh, road and, you know, the area facing the village. And so, you know, on average, about fifteen to twenty vehicles, you know, coming in and out of the site per day and, and trying to keep things, you know, the big deliveries, you know, limited to the off-peak hours. So I know we're a little tight on time. I don't want to, you know, rehash things that we've already discussed. The project is, you know, a, a significant amount of Hawaii's islands clean energy and, and represents a significant amount of jobs. If we can go to the next slide, I just wanted to note that, you know, um, as construction is starting, we, we really want to be, a good neighbor and a, in a good member of the community. We've established a, a hotline that, you know, if you see something or you're concerned about something or you just have a question, please, you know, use the phone number. I think maybe we'll post it in the chat, you know, you're, please reach out and a member of our project team will, you know, be happy to get in touch with you. You can also contact us via email, um, or, you know, uh, find up-to-date information on our project website if that's, uh, best for you. So with that, I'll, uh, I'll pass it over to Shane and, and just want to say thank you again to James and the, um, Association.
Thanks for that, Nick. Um, I'll be really quick about wrapping this up. Uh, I do want to, um, extend our appreciation to the many, uh, community leaders who have helped guide the, uh, design of this project. It really provided some, uh, input into, uh, our efforts to try and be a meaningful, uh, contributor to this community. I'm, uh, unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on how you look at it, a Hawaii prep grad, so, um, I have, uh, please don't hit me. Um, I do, uh, uh, take my responsibilities to this community very seriously. I do want to, um, thank very much, uh, Representative David Tarnas in particular, the Waikoloa Community Associate, uh, Waikoloa Leadership Council, I should say, and the many other elected officials and community leaders who have helped us throughout this process. We're really proud of what this project represents and the many jobs and economic opportunities and environmental benefits that it will bring. Thanks so much.
Mahalo Shane, Nick, Kirsten, thank you so much for joining us again. And, uh, if you don't mind sticking around, we'll, uh, we'll save some Q and A for you towards the end here with our other groups and other presenters. So thank you so much for spending a little time with us and presenting some updates. I know it's, uh, time is short, but, and Lotte went through as well as our other presenter. So I really appreciate your patience and joining us here. Thank you. Next up, I would like to welcome the team from Interjects, uh, to update us on the Hali Kula Vehi Solar Project here on the outskirts of Waimea. And I want to thank, uh, Miriam Burnett Martin, uh, who's a Senior Advisor of Community Relations, Oliver Robson, a Project Manager for Wind and Solar Energy, and Julie Mancenelli, Director of Environment, for joining us this evening. Welcome.
Aloha, everyone. Uh, thank you, James and Waimea Community Association for having us again. I echo everyone's comments about, um, the great presentation tonight and all the great efforts that are going on in the community and, mahalo for having us, um, do another community update. When we last met with everyone, we were sharing the results of all the archaeology. When we last met with everyone, we were sharing the results of all the archaeological and environmental studies. Our team has been going away over the last year and a bit to work on more of the technical studies and design. And we're really excited to come back tonight, uh, and share just kind of where we're at. Uh, I'm also, um, really pleased to introduce everyone to two of our colleagues that are involved. Now, we have our project manager, Oliver Robson. He's been here with Interjects for almost nine years now. And he will be taking the project through construction and will be a familiar face to everyone within the community. As well as Miriam, she's as our Senior Advisor of Community Relations. She's based here, uh, in Hawaii. And she's part of our long-term, um, presence in Hawaii. And, um, she's already starting to work within the various communities across the islands in which our projects are on. And so, um, please reach out and she's going to share lots of great stuff with everyone tonight. So, uh, let it, turn it over to our teammates here.
Thanks so much, Julia. Um, and congratulations, James and the Waimea Community Association, our recognition tonight and thanks for having us. So as, as Julia said, um, Miriam Burnett Martin, Senior Advisor for Community Relations, and we'll just go over a very quick, um, introduction on who we are, because I think the last time we presented was back in two thousand and nineteen, uh, pre-COVID. So just a quick reminder, um, we're a Canadian corporation. We were founded in nineteen ninety and we develop, acquire and, own and operate hydroelectric facilities, wind farms, solar farms and energy storage facilities in Canada, in France, the United States and Chile. So we have a pretty simple mission, but it's, uh, pretty straightforward. We believe that people should have access to reliable, affordable, clean and renewable energy. And we love being able to contribute toward building a better world. That's pretty much what we stick to. So how do we do that? Well, our vision, um, really focuses on what we call our three Ps, people, planet and prosperity. And we contribute to this vision by leveraging our long-term commitment, um, expertise and, and definitely an innovative approach to, to our projects and implementation. And so we remain committed to that. So how do we apply this, um, here, here in Hawaii? Well, we, we focused on, um, on the goal, the sustainable goal to, um, basically, uh, be a hundred percent, renewable sources by two thousand and forty-five. And our mission remains to increase our production of renewable energy by developing and operating high-quality facilities while respecting the environment, uh, and balancing, um, the best interests of, most importantly, our host communities, our partners and our investors. So we've definitely learned to, um, to understand that sustainable development, um, isn't just about what we do, which is obviously produce renewable energy, but it's also how we do it. And, and I can, I can certainly say and speak for everyone in the organization that our success over the years, uh, has been founded on developing, and operating good projects, which we have found to mean projects that strike a fair balance, fair and reasonable balance between economic, environmental and social considerations. So here in Hawaii, just quickly, we're going to talk about Halekuavehi today and, and my, my colleague Oliver will speak about that a bit further. But we have four solar projects in Hawaii that are, um, in various stages of development. Our proposed solar plus battery storage projects would capture renewable energy of the sun to generate electricity and store it for when it's most needed. And we're expecting the four solar projects to power approximately forty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty households with renewable energy. So we have Barber's Point on Oahu. We've got two projects on Maui, Kahana and Pa'ahu. And we have Halekuavehi here, uh, well, there on Hawaii Island. I'm actually on Oahu. So I'm gonna turn it over to Oliver to talk a little bit more about the project and some of the updates.
Good, good evening, everyone. Uh, for our site, uh, we are situated about, uh, five miles south of Waimea uh, on Parker Ranch and just, uh, above Saddle Road. The, I guess we'll go to the next slide if you can. Our timeline so far, we, we had a request for proposal back in February twenty eighteen and then we were successfully awarded the project. We executed our power purchase agreement in December twenty eighteen. And then we had our final approvals through the Public Utility Commission. And then we commenced and completed our archaeological assessments and environmental studies for the site between twenty nineteen and, and now. And now we are working on updating our, our designs and doing our permit and approval progress. Uh, our construction, um, date that we're looking at right now would be towards October, November of this year. And then, uh, we'd be finishing most of the construction for August of next year with our commercial operation date of December second, twenty twenty-two. And our project will have a twenty-five-year PPA timeframe. Just back to our site, uh, on the left side is our preliminary layout, uh, from the original RFP stage. And then showing on the right is our current updated model. Uh, we're pretty similar to the original concept, uh, that we looked at. Uh, the, the area that we're actually utilizing will be less than we anticipated. And this is also due to the, the change in technology and as the modules become more efficient. If I go to the next slide, please. Uh, again, this is just focusing on our current design. In the, uh, on the site, you can see the green little, uh, I guess rectangles. Those are the battery storage, uh, modules for our site. And so we have eleven, uh, battery systems that are spread out through the site. Uh, this also helps to reduce any fire risk, uh, on the site. So if one module was to catch on fire, it doesn't propagate to a cluster. Um, the units that we have there, uh, they are self-contained and have their own HVAC systems within them. And the chance of them actually catching on fire and causing any spread is very low. Uh, the site has been optimized to reduce any grading on the site. So we're trying to, um, not change any of the local environment. Uh, we will mow the grasses down and, uh, install the roads where we need them and then install our piles for the solar system around. Uh, you can see in the, the light blue lines, uh, that's just sort of depicting where we will be modifying the, the water drainage around site just to, to collect it away from where we're doing our, our building, uh, and then it passed through the site. Uh, the fuchsia areas are temporary lay down areas for construction and they will be reclaimed after construction. They won't be part of the operating facilities. Uh, on here, we are showing our, in, in red, about three hundred acres of land. And then our actual, uh, module area will be just under two hundred acres. Uh, the interconnection point, uh, for the utility, uh, the switchyard will be located on the west side of Mamalau Highway. And so we'll have a transmission line that will be crossing over the highway there. I think that's, that's all the information I have for the state right now. Uh, just for the construction phase and timeline, uh, just to give you a quick overview, uh, land preparation will be the, the first thing we'll be doing. And of course, installing the fence around the site, uh, and then doing any of the minimal ratings that we will be doing for, uh, the access roads around. Uh, foundation and underground cabling will be installed. And then we'll be installing the support racks and our system will be utilizing tracking system also. So very minimal ground disturbance for just driving steel piles into the ground. And then everything will be above ground on that. Uh, the battery systems will be laid on concrete foundations and their footprints are relatively small. Uh, the substation, uh, will be built and then we will install the energy storage, um, systems. And then of course, commission the project. And so our, our construction window will be about twelve months of construction. Then we go into operations. Uh, the panels that we're using, um, they're high efficient panels. We're looking at five hundred and forty watt modules right now. In total, we will have just under ninety thousand, uh, modules installed on our site. Our tracking systems utilize, it's a one P technology, so it means just one panel. And the tip height of that will be about fourteen feet off the ground. Uh, the batteries that we're using will be lifting an ion batteries and of course, uh, how we're spreading them around the site reduces any risk for fire propagation. If for whatever reason, there was a fire starting one of them. During our review of the site, uh, we also, uh, prepare a traffic analysis, uh, for construction. And so this is depicting the route that we'll be taking from the, uh, the Kona Harbor to site. And we will, we will be seeing, uh, a lot of, uh, deliveries happening, uh, during construction. For example, with the modules, uh, we were seeing, um, I think it's eight, eight consecutive weeks of, uh, module delivery. But the trucks are limited to one per hour. So we will have, uh, a lot of equipment and materials coming in, but they will not be coming in all at the same time. And so we don't anticipate much, uh, impact for the local traffic scenario. And of course, with our project, uh, we will see if we can repower our systems, uh, at the end of our, our term. Uh, but if, if that isn't selected as an option, uh, Interjects, of course, will decommission the project in its entirety and, uh, return it back to the original state, uh, where however the, the landlord may wish to see it. Uh, Interjects is, uh, we're a responsible company for the entire lifecycle of the project. And of course, recycling all the components is very important to us. And as we see going into the future, um, technologies will change with the type of recycling that happens. And we would foresee that most of everything on the site would be able to, uh, reused or recycled.
That's awesome. Thanks, Oliver. Um, I'm watching James just to make sure I've got the time queue right here, but, um, community benefit. So that's the fun part. That's what I enjoy doing and that's pretty much what I, um, get to support. So, um, again, important part of our work at our company, we're, um, we're definitely focused on, um, successful partnerships with the communities and supporting the communities that we operate within. And, uh, community engagement efforts continue throughout the development of the project, with always the intention of arriving at the best possible final layout that balances pretty much, um, everything archaeological, cultural, environmental, technical, um, economic and, uh, social considerations. So we develop community benefit strategies that, um, include opportunities for not only local job creation, but education grants, sponsorships, um, just to name a few of the ways that we, we've supported organizations. Uh, and to give you an example, our company has supported over a hundred and thirty-four organizations in twenty twenty, which was a difficult year for everyone with COVID. So we're hoping to continue in twenty twenty-one and support even more. So, um, uh, again, we're just going to go over some quick benefits that, um, health identified here. So I'm gonna, I'm not going to read through all of it because in the sake of time, I know that we are, uh, we're pressed for time. But, uh, again, yeah, fixed price contract, um, consumer savings, which is pretty much what we're all interested in. Operational flexibility, uh, we, we'll, we'll have the ability to have, uh, contractual flexibility to dispatch energy from the, from the battery storage system as needed, which is obviously a benefit to the community. Project will contribute up to seventy, uh, seven point seven percent to health cost renewable portfolio standards over the twenty-five years, um, term of the PPA. Will significantly reduce fuel consumption. And importantly, the project will displace its forecast at four hundred and ninety-seven, one hundred and twenty-six barrels of fuels over the twenty-five year term of the PPA. And a total of up to a hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred tons of, um, gas emissions will be avoided during the twenty-five year term of the PPA as well. So the community benefits are again a focus of ours. So with this in mind, I have one minute left. Here are my contact details. I would love to hear from you. Uh, I'm in conversation with quite a few organizations, uh, on Hawaii Island. So if you have any ideas, uh, for ways to partner up or ways that we can support you, please reach out to me. And, um, I look forward to speaking with all of you. Thank you.
Mahalo, Miriam, Julia and Oliver. Thank you so much for your time and attention and detail over this. And if you don't mind speaking with us for a little bit, we have a, a couple of questions and answer session coming up here. All right. Uh, and so finally, uh, I'd like to welcome, uh, and grateful that we're joined by Kevin Walchin, the Hawaii Island Director, and Jennifer Zelko, the Director of Government and Community Affairs, as well as Kristen Okinaka, the Senior Communications Consultant for Hawaii Island, all representing Hawaiian Electric, as they share how these projects, uh, connect to the islandwide grid, their anticipated benefits and really the vision for Hawaiian Electric to move our county and state forward. So I'd like to welcome Kevin, Jennifer and Kristen, uh, to the floor. Um, and thank you again for joining us. Aloha.
How's it? Thank you, James and Riley for reaching out to Scott too, to have us invited to share in you guys' community meeting. Um, and allowing us to give an update on the renewable energy for Hawaii Island. Joining me, uh, is Jennifer Zelko. She's a Director of Governance, Government and Community Affairs for Hawaii Island. And it is always good to learn what's going on in our communities around the island. So this was really good and great information that we've been allowed to hear tonight. Also like to thank Councilman Ri- Ri- Richards and Councilwoman Kimball for, you know, always going after that budget and getting the money for our communities and, and for doing the things that they do in order to make sure that our community and our people are successful and, and, and can benefit. Um, and also to Representative Tarnis for doing the same on the state house level and to making sure that our communities are taken care of. So I'm going to start with this map, which shows our current and future generation resources. As you can see, we have a diverse mix of renewable energy, including wind, hydro, solar and geothermal. We heard from both Interjects and Hali- and, um, Waikoloa Solar today. And they gave a really good breakdown of what each of these plants that are represented here on the, on the map. So I won't go into the detail of what each of these consist of, but just know that, um, with this, right with the state of always setting the goal for thirty percent renewable portfolio standard or RPS for all islands in our service territory by twenty twenty. That's what's driving us to make sure that we reach out and get to this hundred percent renewable by twenty forty-five. In twenty twenty, the consolidated RPS, you know, in other words, across all islands, we were at thirty-five percent. We exceeded what the, the state had set as a goal of thirty percent for all islands, underling our service territory. So we are already well on our way to getting to the twenty forty-five goal of hundred percent. On Hawaii Island, RPS was forty-three percent at the end of twenty twenty. And it will increase this year with PGV's operations ramping back up and more customers adopting rooftop solar. PGV is currently at twenty megawatts and will continue to increase throughout the year. Till they get to the full plant output of thirty-eight megawatts. If PGV was thirty-eight megawatts from the beginning of this year, and with the additional rooftop solar, we estimated that our RPS twenty twenty-one for Hawaii Island, we would have reached seventy-five percent. So you can see how much PGV contributes. Um, their thirty-eight megawatts contribute to us getting even closer to that hundred percent. Cause like I said, in twenty twenty, we was at forty-three percent without PGV. If PGV started the beginning year with their thirty-eight, we would have been at seventy-five plus additional. I mean, that is inclusive of the additional solar that we have got throughout the year. With that being said, you know, in August of twenty nineteen, uh, Hawaiian Electric issued a request for proposal for about nine hundred megawatts of new renewable resources across all islands. What that meant for Hawaii Island was, we issued a request for proposal for in two phases. The first phase, which you guys heard from both, um, Interjects or Halekuavehi and AES Waikoloa Solar, uh, was big contributors to those, that RFP or Phase One RFP, uh, in that two-phase approach. The second, the Phase RFP or the Phase Two RFP actually resulted in a full coal solar, uh, project, which is actually being under review of the Public Utilities Commission at this time. And a battery storage project at Archeo Holi. and a battery storage project at Archeohole Power Plant. Same thing, still being under review. With that being said, you know, if you look around the island, we talked about the solar, you heard from AES and Hali Kuvahih, told you about PGV. The other one that that's been in the news recently that you guys have heard has been Huonua. And what has happened is Huonua has been remanded back to the Public Utilities Commission to make a decision. So whatever decision the Public Utilities Commission makes, we will know where we go from there. But right now, that is back with the commission for their decision at this time. As far as other renewables, we have the wind energy renewable plants around the island, which includes Havi renewable development here on, on the North Kohala area that you guys are familiar with. In our south, we have Pukini Nui Wind Farm that provides wind energy on the south to our grid. There's another plant, but it's not part of us. It's a, it is a wind farm that is in Waikoloa area that actually serves the Department of Water Supply. It is not, they don't have a purchase power agreement with us, but they actually provide renewable energy to our Department of Water Supply, which then they have a, a contract with us that whatever excess they have provides back into our system. But their main source is to feed the DWS or Department of Water Supply system. My counterparts that had mentioned from both AES and, and from Waikoloa Solar had talked about the benefits in, in detail from each aspect. And a lot of it deals with the 100% renewable portfolio, diverse portfolio with solar, wind, hydro, geothermal, biomass, allows pro-choice customer choices to use renewable type energy. Reduces our dependency on imported fossil fuels, reduces greenhouse gas emission, and also reduces costs. One of the things that you guys had heard and both Nick, I mean, excuse me, Kirsten and Miriam had talked about is they had talked about the price in which each of the solar projects will provide. It's an eight to nine cent component when you, when you look at what they had mentioned. If you take that eight to nine cents component, right, and we look at our bills today, majority of our bills are consistent, are consist or consist of 60% of that bill consists of fuel and taxes. So in other words, the more fuel we use, the bigger the price is, right? That's what it comes down to. If I was to try to compare what they had mentioned, which is the eight to nine cents, I would compare that to what we call avoided costs. We publish the avoided cost every month. That avoided cost, which is the generation component tied to fuel, is about 13.6 to 13.9 cents. So when you look at that, from that perspective, the difference between the avoided cost and the price that was mentioned by Miriam and Kirsten, it's roughly about four cents. So that kind of tells you how much better the renewable energy prices coming in today using the RFP process is that we can lower the cost of renewable energy. Because this arrow here, which I have, says this will reduce as more lower cost renewable comes online. The key word on that is lower cost renewable, right? Because you can have higher cost renewable, because it's not always the cheapest way to go, right? But understanding that lower cost renewable helps to lower the cost to our customers. The next part of, that I would like to talk to you guys about is hurricane season. And thanks to James, he had mentioned earlier, you know, being prepared, right? When we talk about hurricane season and we talk about building resilient communities, we usually talk about it in three concepts: community preparedness, government preparedness, and risk reduction. But the one point that I wanted to focus on tonight was the community preparedness part. I will focus on this part because, you know, I wanted to mention the resources that are available to the community, to everyone, to even to anyone that would like it. We have a handbook for emergency preparedness on our website. We have printed copies at Public Library, ACIS Hardware, Ben Franklin Stores, and at Sunshine True Value Hardware in Havi. Or you guys can call 969-0137, and we will get one sent to you if you guys should need, if you guys would want one. So this preparedness book is very important, because it gives you a checklist on what to get ready, what you need for 14 days, what things is important to have in your kit. So good place to start. The next resource that I wanted to talk to you folks about was, you know, with emergencies coming up with hurricanes, with storms, with outages that can occur, I wanted to point out that we have our outage map located on our website. This website here that I have linked here gives you an outage map of what outages we have occurring around the island in our system. So this is a good resource for you folks to kind of see if, if we know about your outage, if we see it, or if it just happened to you and we haven't heard anybody call in yet. This gives you an idea of what outages is happening on the island. The next one that I wanted to show or mention is Twitter actually offer, we actually have a Twitter. You can follow us on Twitter that gives up-to-date outage responses. And we tweet, tweet out these, these outages pretty consistently. This is pretty accurate, pretty timely on the outages. So you guys can use that to kind of get up to date. And then the last part I wanted to mention was, we just established maybe about six to nine months ago, our Hawaiian Electric mobile app. Now, this Hawaiian Electric mobile app gives you the ability to look at these outage maps, looks at other information that we're getting from our site. So if you haven't downloaded this app yet, please take advantage of downloading this app from either our Apple, I mean, either from Apple Store or from Google Apps. And get this on you guys' phones, so you guys can have this at your fingertips. And then lastly, the last piece that I wanted to kind of cover was, you know, the pandemic has been hard on everyone. Can you believe it? It's been about over a year since this all started. If you have friends or family that have been having difficulty with recent, with rent or utilities, the Hawaii County Emergency Rental Assistance Program that Councilwoman Kimball had mentioned, and also James had mentioned, is very important, right? You know, these kind of things help out our family and friends and our community. So this website here that I have on this slide, you guys can go through this slide and you can look up and get support for this rental assistance program. Please take advantage of that, because that's, that helped with the COVID situation. The second thing is, you know, for over a year, we have been in a moratorium or on a hold of disconnects, right? So our, and that came to an end on May 31st. That moratorium where we put a hold, wasn't going to do disconnects, trying to get through the pandemic, came to an end on May 31st. What I want to say is that, you know, being that it came to an end on May 31st, doesn't mean we're just going to immediately go out and disconnect or pass through account. What we will do is, and what I'm asking all of you, if you have friends or family that needs some kind of help with the, with their electric bill, please reach out to our customer service group. I have the phone numbers here on the screen. I also have the website that you can go to, that you can click on and see what the payment arrangements are. Because when you set that payment arrangement up, it helps us to kind of keep your bill moving along, so it doesn't get into that point where it rears or a bad situation and kind of go back from this. This payment plan allows us to continue to serve you and allows to help pay down the bill. And lastly, I wanted to, but not least, right, I wanted to mention Hawaii Energy. Because Hawaii Energy gives us, the consumer, the option to use our energy efficiently, and that's very important. So if you go through this Hawaii Energy website, you can look up their energy efficiency rebates, energy efficiency appliances and methods in order to reduce your household energy usage, which in turn lowers your electric bill. And with that being said, that takes me through my slide, and I would like to say thank you for this opportunity. Pandemic has changed our communities, and it put us all, our families, friends, us as a community, stretched us thin. But we all survived because we do it together. And this, this doing and working together, as been mentioned earlier inside this whole presentation, is very important. And any help or anything that you guys can do to provide a feedback or support or any questions, please don't hesitate to ask. Thank you.
Mahalo, Kevin. Thank you so much. Appreciate your time and all of the information they're providing. And I know to our viewers, there was a lot of information from all of our guests, all of our presenters this evening. So appreciate you being here with us and joining us. I'd like to take a little bit of time, just about 10 minutes or so. I don't want to go too late here, just to pose a couple of community questions to our presenters, particularly about our renewable energy generation. So I'd like to open it over to Mike Donnelly and Patty Cook for a couple of these questions.
Thanks, James, and thanks, Kevin, and Christian, Miriam, Oliver, and Shane for the presentation. It was really informative and gets residents up to speed on what's going on out there. Because as I drive down Waikoloa Access Road, I see that construction going on. Now I'm completely in the know. So thanks so much. And kind of getting to Kevin's last point about hawaiien energy.com, super useful link. So I'm going to go there personally and check it out. But I think at the end of the day, folks want to know, as we're pushing towards renewable energy and getting to that goal, for everybody in their resident in their house, what is it going to mean, hypothetically, two years from now, three years from now, on their electric bill? Will they be able to see where renewable energy is contributing to reducing their energy bill? And really gets down to the hardcore question is, can I expect a decrease in my energy bill down the road? And in any order, start with Helco and go to Intergex and the Waikoloa team. Thanks.
Okay, I can, I can start, and then the two projects can chime in. But they, they actually had on their slide, on one of the slides that I saw, which was on Intergex one, where they showed costs, reduction to the customer bill when they come online. And they gave it in years like 2022 and 2023 and so forth. Now, the range value was around that six to $7 reduction on the bill for the customer's bill. Now, you got to take that with a grain of salt. And the reason I say that you take that with a grain of salt is because everything depends on the cost of fuel, the time when the, the generation is running, and how the generation is utilized and when it's utilized. So if you take that with a grain of salt, it's a good thing to kind of use as a baseline to know that the bill is going down. But if you refer back to my, my slide where I showed the cost of your bill being consisted of 60% of fuel or generation cost, right? That piece is very telling, because anytime you reduce the generation cost, right? Reduce the fuel usage, and they all spoke about reducing fuel, it helps to lower the cost to the customer. So the answer to your question is yes, there's, there will be reductions in cost as we move along into the future. How much that will be is left to be seen depending on what the fuel cost is, what the contribution is to the load, how much load we have, all those pieces that come into play.
Did we want to have Intergex or?
I think Patty, you could, you could pose another question if you'd like, Patty.
Oh, okay. My question would really be, what kind of obstacles are you incurring to be able to get online to really go as fast as we could to get you up and running? This is for Intergex and AES, please.
Obstacles that we, we have to overcome, I guess it's really, just to, as, I guess, following the, the previous question with cost, as we have to look in depth with the engineering that we're doing on the site and how are you utilizing the site to also make it the most economical for us to make sure that we're passing the low cost of these projects on to the residents. We will, we'll also see through the permitting process, we are the first of these big projects going through for, especially with the battery storage systems. And so the permitting process, that review period, and making sure everyone knows what we're doing and what we're promoting, that that is a smooth process that we're going through. And making sure that, of course, again, with the permitting side, that the county and the other agencies are mindful of the time that it takes to, to go through that process and also to get us to construction as early as possible.
How about you?
I'll speak on, you know, our project at least, you know, I'll say super obvious, but it's COVID, really. At the end of the day, the challenges that have arisen due to COVID have been so systemic across the board that it affects construction material costs, all the way through permitting slowdowns, workforce. I mean, it is literally a systemic sea change for everybody, not only in renewable energy, but obviously through business sectors throughout the island. So it's not probably the most insightful answer, but it is probably the most accurate.
Thank you. Michael?
Yeah, in terms of obstacles, I think this is more for Intergex. But I did notice that the route for equipment coming up from Kauai High and in my day job, I, I deal with that traffic coming up Waikoloa Access Road up through Saddle Region. So I'm curious, in terms of obstacles, did you do, was there a review of going up Kauai High Road versus Waikoloa Access Road to get to, to, to the job site? And secondly, I guess for, for, for all of them, I work up at the military base. So one of the things we, we deal with consistently is the wildlife. And as we all know, driving down Waikoloa Access Road, there's, you know, the feral goats, sheep, and ungulates. So just curious if that ever was an issue or something to adjudicate.
Oliver, did you want to jump on that one there?
I guess I can. The way that we, we approached it, we just looked at the, the direct route that most of the trucking would take. We did the analysis on that to see what the impact would be. But for, for alternate access routes, I don't think we, we weighed it that heavily. We were just trying to show what the impacts would be and would we see a change with the amount of vehicle traffic that our project would be generating. And especially with the amount of workforce that we would have on our site and delaying, and then, and making sure that deliveries were offset from the main traffic hours. We saw that there was very little impact overall.
And one of the concerns is when Representative Tarnis mentioned that the Waikaka Bridge construction is going to happen, that could be a quagmire without any construction. So curious. Yeah, and so just, just for feedback, for military convoys, that's going up Kauai High Road is off limits just because of the traffic it creates and that kind of thing. So. Okay, any, any, from AES or Intergex, any thoughts on the wildlife? Any issue there?
I can, I can speak up on the, on the wildlife. So thanks for the question, Mike. And we did look at, you know, a full biological survey of, you know, wildlife. You know, feral goats were, you know, definitely in the area. But overall, you know, it's, you know, the, the Um, but overall, you know, it's, um, you know, the, the, the land has been, um, you know, grazed um, you know, over time. And, you know, no, the, the project is not, you know, expecting any impacts to um, you know, plants or, or animals as a result of um its construction.
Uh, in, in a similar fashion for either uh team, has UXO clearance been uh, an obstacle or something that's held you up consistently?
So we did, uh, I'll, I'll speak just on, on the AES Waikoloa project. Um, we actually had um uh, site-specific UXO um safety plan uh that was submitted to the Department of Health. And um, you know, it involved a, of basically a full survey of, you know, all of the areas on the site where there would be um, you know, ground disturbing activities. So that took place um earlier this year, uh, prior to um, you know, any, any mobilization on the site. Um, one UXO was found, uh, Army Corps Police Department were, you know, and, and the UXO specialists were, were contacted to, you know, handle um remediation of that. But it was a, you know, it was pretty much a full sweep of the entire site. And it'll be ongoing, um, you know, during the construction process, just to ensure safe, you know, safety of the workers and people on the site.
Thank you. Patty?
Um, Kevin, if we could ask you, I actually feel like I've lived under a rock. I had never heard of the Puakoa Solar, Solar Project, a sixty meg project. Could you tell us anything about that at all, time-wise? And how is it compared to these other two? For Kevin? Maybe he can't hear me.
Let's make sure he's unmuted there.
There we go. There you are.
Thanks. Oh, thank you. Sorry. So yeah, um, the Puakoa Solar is still under review by the Public Utilities Commission at this time. Um, so, but it is a sixty megawatt, um, two hundred forty hour, um, battery energy storage system with a two hundred forty uh megawatt hour battery energy storage system. So that's the details that we can provide. Um, as the commission reviews and either approves or or disapproves, right? For lack of a better term. Uh, we don't know where it goes from there. Uh, but that's, that's where we're at on that project.
Got it. What happens if we may ask about extended rainy days? How does that impact Helco and, and also the consumer costs?
Um, can you explain to me what extended rainy days?
I know, that seems unlikely that in Waikoloa we have extended rainy days. But if you went for a period of days where they weren't able to be generating the same level of energy because of overcast conditions, how does that affect Helco? And what does that affect um, the cost to the consumer?
Uh, that is a, that is a great question. Great question. Um, so, you know, with, with renewable energy, there, there comes pluses and minuses like anything else we do. Um, with fossil fuel generation, we have pluses and minuses. With renewable energy, we have pluses and minuses. Um, so not having the sun does create an issue, right? Because at that point in time, the rest of our system would either have to generate with some fossil fuel unit or with some other unit like wind, or with some other unit like geothermal, or with some other unit like hydro. So as we start to diversify our portfolio of renewable energies, and that's one of the things we talked about, right, is that the portfolio um is so diverse, that allows us to deal with those type of events that is happening. Um, some of that gets called out and picked up in uh some of the studies that we do when we go into agreements or going to purchase agreements with these different developers. Um, we, we run what we call a pro- production simulation that shows what generation units will run based off of fuel, based off of availability. And we, we kind of figure out where each unit fits into the mix. Now, you take the solar out to sun, that would be similar to like overhauls. We would have to then have another unit pick up and, and take care of it. Um, in the case of an emergency though, that means we would have to have the units available. So we oftentimes from the utility side say it's better to have the units that we have, even if we have more, so that we can then balance and meet the needs of our consumers or the customers itself, especially in times of, of of turmoil. Let, let me just, let me just liken this to uh PGV, right? So PGV was generating thirty-eight megawatts prior to two thousand and eight, May two thousand and eighteen. Now, that's three years ago, right? Um, May two thousand and eighteen, they got shut down because lava in Leilani Estate, which we would never have thought would have occurred, happened and cut the, cut off the route to PGV itself, right? Luckily, we still had other generating units. We still was increasing the renewable energy portfolios. We still had other renewable energy mixes such as wind, hydro, and whatnot in the mix that we allowed us to cover for that. So though it's not the sun issue that you mentioned, it is still something that can happen. And therefore diversity allows us to recover and, and deal with it. I hope I answered your question.
It's very interesting.
Thank you, Patty. Thank you, Kevin. I'm gonna, gonna wrap it up here a little bit. Um, I just have one question, really. We had a bunch of questions come in from the live feed. Um, and I'm, I'm grateful, Kevin, that you talked a little about uh emergency preparedness as we approach the hurricane season here. And so really, one of the questions was about um kind of a for, maybe a little forward thinking about emergency preparedness. And I know it, it, it puts a cost on Hawaiian Electric and then eventually the consumer most likely, but it's, it really relates to um the utility lines and the transmission lines and the work that's being done to um trim back any sort of vegetation around our lines. Uh, what, is there, is there a reason why it's only done to a certain extent versus uh, removing those, those vegetation, those trees entirely?
Okay, that's a good question. Um, so let me, let me try to answer it as quickly as I can, but hopefully I, I, I make it clear enough. Uh, when you talk about vegetation management, you talk about trimming trees, right? To trim back branches on the tree, and let's just say we go back ten feet from the line, go back fifteen feet from the line, trimming those branches away costs X amount of dollars to trim. When you go to do removal now of a tree, now this tree is hundred, hundred fifty feet high in the air. Now you try imagine how many limbs of that one tree we cutting back to remove, to, to, to get, get rid of. All that money that we spend just for that one tree to remove all those, those limbs, branches, stumps, and then to dispose, get rid of, move away, takes away from actually spanning across our four thousand square mile island, which consists of a lot of trees, including albezia trees. So for our customers to pay the cost of removals, we have to balance that cost so that we don't raise or overinflate the cost just by taking care of removing trees. So that's where the balance comes in. Um, I don't know if you recall, but back when we had hurricanes in two thousand and fourteen, um, we did go into a group, uh, we had a committee between the state, the county, uh, ourselves, where we kind of talked about the albezia tree mitig- mitigation. In fact, we had a working group. And each group then took on having to remove albezia trees because it, it was identified as the most hazardous and critical impact for emergency response and people in, in general, right? State, the House of Representatives got money for the state to remove trees in the DOT rideaways for many years. Um, and I think it continues to talk about it. The reason why we had to ask for that support and that money is because removal trees, removing trees is very expensive. Uh, there's no way, you know, you can do it without really impacting your electric bill tremendously. And that would be my answer to you. I hope I answered that question.
Yeah. Thank you, Director. Appreciate that. Um, and really, this is my last, is kind of a comment. It was a question posed in the live feed, but it's really a comment for uh, both of these uh solar generation projects here for Halekuavehi and AES Waikoloa. And it, it comes from, and you know, Kirsten, you kind of answered it there in, in terms of connecting with these groups. The individual is actually a uh, a leader at an academic institution here in Waimea. So really, they were asking about um how can students really learn about these projects and kind of get involved and engage in some of these things? So I, I, I would encourage you to connect with our, our, our institutions, our, you know, our schools and whatnot. Uh, there may be some interest from students to learn about these projects, um, and really get engaged and see how they're impacting the community. So thank you so much for answering that question, Kirsten. And I do encourage both of the projects to, to really work with the schools here. So thank you so much. Um, and I, you know, like I, I mentioned before, I, I really appreciate everyone's patience. Uh, this was a little long of a meeting tonight. Um, we had a lot of information, a lot of important things that are in changes for our community here. Um, and progress moving forward. So I, I really appreciate all of our guests and presenters on tonight's call, uh, your time, uh, your diligence to your work and your craft. Um, so thank you so much for being here and spending time with Waimea community. Uh, mahalo nui to all of you for joining us, uh, really for taking the time to update our viewers on a lot of your projects that are moving forward. We haven't seen some of you in a little while. So it's great to really come back and connect and see some of the progress being made on these projects. Um, and really, you know, overall helping to lead our community and move our community forward. So thank you, Director Walchin, for your effort there with Hawaiian Electric. Um, and mahalo to our council members, uh, Representative Tarnus, um, grateful for your, your honor you bestowed on WCA along from your colleagues as well. Um, and of course, it was wonderful to hear from our, our police force, uh, our new police captain, as well as Pohmai and Kailani, um, as they lead our effort here on, on, you know, with our voyaging Ohana, but also in our community and moving that conversation forward and representing a different aspect of the community that need to be heard and, and shown and showcased. So mahalo nui to you. And of course, you know, thank you to all of our viewers for joining the live stream this evening. Um, you're welcome to revisit and re-watch these recordings up on our WCA Facebook page or even up on our YouTube channel, which we posted later this weekend here. Uh, and so in closing, on behalf of the Waimea Community Association Board, I wish you good health and be well. Aloha.